Call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 15, 2015. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Sal, trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Longston.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Haley.
We have Quorum, if you'll please rise for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to everyone who's here and all those who are watching at home. If you're here with us this evening and you'd like to address the board at any time, I just please ask that you be recognized by the President and make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can see and hear what you have to say. First up this evening is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to village officers' reports. First up is the village president's report. I have a motion to appoint Serge Ambrose to the Riverside Historical Commission to fill a vacancy with the term to expire in 2018. So I'd ask for a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ballerine, second by Ms. Collins. Mr. Ambrose is an architect and brings a background in landscape and history and will do a great job, I'm sure, on the Historical Commission. We appreciate his willingness to serve. Any comment, questions for Mr. Ambrose? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ambrose is here this evening, and Ms. Haley, if you'll do the honors.
I just need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Serge Ambrose, do solemnly swear.
I, Serge Ambrose, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. I didn't know it was such elaborate production. Thank you. Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. So am I able to leave?
You are.
Okay.
I know you have another engagement to go to.
I have to go to a dinner, so thank you very much.
You're very -- we'll contact you about the Historical -- yeah, we'll -- thanks, Karen. All right. That is all I have this evening. Manager Francis.
I have no report this evening.
Moving on to the approval or consent agenda, are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve.
Approved.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports? Mr. Ballerine.
Riverside TV, something new from the Riverside Cable Commission. It's going to be a new show called My Riverside TV. It's a new TV that's all about Riverside residents, featuring resident-created videos that are all about Riverside, about or by people in Riverside, and self-help or how-to videos. To be selected for broadcast, videos must be of interest to and produced in their entirety by Riverside residents. Videos are now being accepted for the show's pilot episode. They can be submitted by contacting the show's executive producer, Steve Wojcik, at steve@riversidetv.us. Videos are subject to review by five members of Riverside Cable Commission. All decisions regarding the suitability for broadcast lie solely with the cable commissioners. Watch Riverside on Comcast Channel 6 and riversidetv.us. So this is exciting and a good chance for our residents to get involved. Secondly is, probably a little bit prematurely, but we're getting very, very close that Riverside TV will soon be available with AT&amp;T U-verse. So we're just finishing up some of that stuff. So hopefully within the next few months, there'll be another way for you to watch our board meetings and all the publications that we have going on. So it'll be Riverside TV at AT&amp;T, Riverside TV at Comcast, YouTube, as well as the website.
That's great.
That's wonderful.
And just before we move away from Mr. Ballerine, I just wanted to let everyone know that Mr. Ballerine finished his inaugural Chicago Marathon this past weekend, and so congratulations on a real milestone there, Mr. Ballerine.
Thank you.
Actually, he couldn't get up off the couch that night, but he's back with us now.
I was fortunate enough to run for a while with a woman from Riverside, Kathy Braun, Karen Braun, who was her 30th Chicago Marathon. Kathy, Kathy Braun, 30th. And then I looked up all the people from Riverside. There's actually about 25 people that ran, 30 people, so it's quite a showing from town. So it was pretty good.
Maybe we should bring their names in and read them.
Yeah, 30th marathon.
Wow, that's amazing. Anything else from liaisons? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to smoke-free air regulations. Ms. Francis.
Thank you. In late 2006, the village passed Riverside Smoke-Free Air Act to protect the public health and comfort in the environment by prohibiting smoking in enclosed public places and places of employment within 25 feet of all public entrances to such places, in open-air dining areas and within 25 feet of such areas and within certain unenclosed public places, including schools, park, and recreation areas, to ensure that non-smokers may breathe air free from hazardous effects of secondhand smoke. The item, the ordinance that is before you includes a revised definition to include e-cigarettes in addition to revised definitions for smoke or smoking, to be inclusive of e-cigarettes and some other additional items, including hookah, weed, herbs, or any other lighted tobacco product. And then additionally, the ordinance calls for updating 6-1-24 to also update the definitions to include e-cigarettes and also the fine and penalty under that section. Notably, 6-21-24, or 6-1-24, is the sale of tobacco, tobacco accessories, e-cigarettes, and smoking herbs to minors prohibited. So that is, the ordinance in its entirety is just to revise the code to be inclusive of that, and Chief Weitzel and also Village Attorney Mars assisted in drafting that ordinance.
First, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins. Second by Mr. Longston. Are there any questions or comments about this?
There was a second by Mr. Ballerine. Wasn't it? It was a tie.
It was a tie. He's already got his accolades for tonight.
It's just a joke.
I've got my ear right here by Scott, so I didn't -- okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance providing for the issue of approximately $600,000 in general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2015A, for the purpose of providing the revenue source for the payment of certain outstanding obligations of the village, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Ms. Francis.
Director Salinas.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Salinas.
Good evening, board of trustees. So earlier this week, the board was provided with an agenda packet that contained a description of the purpose of this most recent bond issuance, the general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2015A, and a draft of the related ordinance. The board was also notified that the actual bidding on these bonds would occur this morning, October 15, 2015. Actual bids were in fact received and opened this morning, and Mr. Kevin McKenna from Spear Financial is in attendance tonight and will be providing additional details concerning the bidding process and the outcome of the bids. Now that the final bids have been received, Chapman and Cutler, our bond counsel, has provided a revised bond ordinance that was distributed to the board earlier today. So before I introduce Mr. McKenna, I will read aloud the revised and final title of the bond ordinance. For board consideration tonight is an ordinance providing for the issue of $604,000 general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2015A, of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of providing the revenue source for the payment of certain outstanding obligations of said village, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to Park Ridge Community Bank. I would now like to introduce Mr. Kevin McKenna, President of Spear Financial Incorporated and municipal advisor to the village.
Before Mr. McKenna starts, can we get a motion and a second for the ordinance, please?
So.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Ms. Collins. Mr. McKenna, welcome.
Good evening. We took bids today. There were two bidders. The best bidder, as has been mentioned, was Park Ridge Community Bank, and the second bidder was Hinsdale Bank and Trust. These are the same two bidders who show up every two years when you do this. Same order also. The rates are lower, and you can hear all this information about how rates are going to go up and everything else, but the rates are lower. The winning bid was 134, and last year it was, I'm sorry, actually, two years ago it was 132, although the second bidder, Hinsdale Trust, was lower. So rates are about the same as they were in 2013 when you did this. Because the rates were lower than expected, that's why we could increase the bond issue from 600,000 to 604,000, because remember, this stays within your maximum tax cap amount, and this takes care of your debt service for the next two years on one of your bond issues, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions about it.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Thank you. Next up is an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 18, Section 3, 18-2, tax imposed of the village code of Riverside. Ms. Salinas?
Okay, so for board consideration tonight, it's an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 18, Section 3-18-2, tax imposed of the village code of Riverside, Illinois. So during recent discussions of the proposed fiscal year 2016 budget, village staff presented a number of options for increasing revenues. One option being an increase in the electric utility tax rate that is charged to consumers for usage of electricity. These electric tax rates do vary based on a number of kilowatt-hours used in any given month, and such rates are capped by state law. This ordinance would increase the existing tax rates to the maximum allowed by law, and according to my calculations, this would result in an increase of approximately $2.84 annually to the average household. On an annual basis, this rate increase would result in an approximate increase of $10,437 in utility tax revenues. Accompanying your agenda packet is an agenda item history that provides more details and tables concerning this proposed increase. And I will answer any questions that the board may have.
First, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. Motion by Mr. Setteby.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Questions for Ms. Salinas, discussion? I know we've already talked about this once before. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is considerations, the final discussion of the fiscal year 2016 budget. Staff has been working diligently on this since our last meeting, and as late as today, we're able to provide updated numbers to the board. So, Ms. Salinas, would you like to walk us through it?
Okay, so tonight we continue public discussion of the fiscal year 2016 budget. So at the September 17, 2015, board meeting, village staff presented the recommended fiscal year 2016 budget that reflected a net deficit in the general fund in the amount of $161,411. At that time, village staff also provided a listing of potential expenditure reductions that if completely enacted, would have reduced this net deficit to approximately $89. The general consensus of the board was not to proceed with enacting most of the expenditure reductions on this list. However, village staff was instructed to continue reviewing a number of fees for potential adjustment. So as a result of this discussion and recent events, staff has carried out the following modifications to the recommended fiscal year 2016 budget. Eliminating court reporting services in the planning commission cost center and increasing personnel costs in the cable commission's cost center, that was $3,000. We also increased personnel costs in a number of cost centers due to revised dental insurance premium rates. We also increased personnel costs for a number of positions. We increased the farmer's market revenue by 7,000, and we reallocated certain personnel costs from the general fund to the water and sewer fund based on an analysis of recent personnel activity. So the net effect of the above adjustments on this recommended 2016 budget is an increase in budgeted general fund revenues of 7,000, a decrease in general fund expenditures of 99, for a net increase in budgeted surplus of 7,099. So included in your package is a schedule that shows the changes in the recommended 2016 general fund budget from the previous version that was discussed at the September 17 board meeting. Now, this is revised because you also did receive just recently an additional schedule, but, you know, the board did enact this utility tax rate increase, so that'll improve the or reduce the budget deficit by initial $10,437. I do want to point out that the budgets for the water and sewer, the E911, and the capital projects funds have also been revised due to the reallocation of the personnel costs due to the deferral of certain capital projects and the addition of a water main replacement project. So included in your agenda packet are numerous updated schedules to aid in this continued discussion. So very fluid situation. We just provided an additional schedule that shows some additional adjustments to primarily revenues. Just so you know, so when I presented to the board the financial forecast, I was working off of seven months' worth of data. That was two months ago. So just recently, now that we've gone, we're in October, we have two additional months of data to work with, so now we've got a full nine months of financial information. So Jessica and I have gone ahead and revisited some of these numbers, revised some of the projections, and that is the basis for the revised revenue numbers that you see before you in that one schedule, summary schedule. I have it here. So if we enact these revised 2016 budget numbers specifically to sales taxes, places for eating taxes, grants, ambulance service fees, fines and forfeitures, investment income, other revenue, and then a decrease, a slight decrease in the liability insurance expenditure, your deficit, the deficit actually becomes an actual surplus, not including, I have to point out, not including the $22,000 transfer, operating transfer for the Parks and Rec, because I explained it last time, it's not really an expenditure, it's just an accounting mechanism to move money from one fund to another.
Questions for Ms. Salinas?
The one that sticks out the most is the ambulance service fees on a percentage basis. That's a pretty significant change. Could you help us understand?
Well, if behind there, you should see, let me see, what page is it?
Oh, Jesus.
Page two, I've highlighted. If you look historically, you'll see that on the low end in 2011.
2015 projection.
I'm sorry. There's still one that's highlighted in purple and yellow. I think it's on the second page of that, under, you'll see ambulance service fees.
Got it.
Okay. So if you look, we start, we have historical information. 2011, actual fees or revenues were 148. 2012, 183. 2013, 182. 2014, 173. I had previously projected a lower amount to be conservative, but just based on the revised projection in just the most recent history. We've, I think I've increased it, previously I showed that as 129, 129,000, so I've revised that up to 170, which is in line with the most recent year's revenue of 180,000.
And with regard to this particular item, it's also a timing issue, so it fluctuates from month to month, but now that we have nearly three-quarters of the year booked, we have a better feel.
Okay, now that makes sense. I got it now. I see it. Thank you.
Other than the reallocation of salaries and that type of thing, are there any other changes to the expenses in this, or is it?
It was, as I said, it was the dental, when I first prepared for it, yeah, it was just a small increase, but the dental insurance premiums.
Just the things that you mentioned, other than the things you mentioned, there's really nothing?
No, no, other than that, no.
Other questions? Mr. Pollak?
I just want to be clear. So the last time we spoke, and in the staff summary, you'd indicated a deficit of 143,875, correct?
Let me just look at that schedule. I showed a deficit of 143,875, but that included this utility tax rate increase, correct?
And so are you, these changes, I obviously haven't had time to go through this, but just to summarize, you're suggesting that we now have a balanced budget?
I am, yes, that we have actually a surplus of 4,000 excluding the transfers out.
And you achieve that by increasing the revenue projections primarily?
Primarily, like I said, it's the revenue projections, the biggest one being the ambulance service fees. The second largest would be fines and forfeitures, also based on historical information, which is in the schedule here.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Salinas. I think that's it. You don't need any formal action things. This is just.
No, we will then incorporate this as part of the document.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Serge.
Thank you.
Very nice work. I've got the sharpest pencils in Illinois. Next up is new business. We have before us tonight a discussion of video gaming licensing and requirements.
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Based on some inquiry from various board members, staff was directed to evaluate video gaming in Riverside. Included as part of the packet is a memo from Chief Weitzel, who's also present at the meeting. Also provided were the various questions and answers that are typically presented as part of a video gaming discussion. Would you like me to go through each item?
I don't think you need to go through it. The board's had a chance to review this.
Essentially, the Video Gaming Act was enacted in July of 2009, authorizing the placement of up to five video gaming terminals in licensed retail establishments where alcohol is served for consumption on the premises, truck stops, veteran, and fraternal establishments. The VGTs are all connected to and monitored by a central communication system. Recently, staff received an inquiry from an existing business regarding video gaming in Riverside. Some of the items and the issues for the board to consider are whether or not the board wants to opt in to video gaming. Presently, Riverside has opted out. Should video gaming be allowed only in existing businesses? Should gambling parlors be permissible in Riverside? Does the board want different licensing requirements for B1 and B2 districts? Should the revenue be used for a specific purpose, such as pensions, roads, public safety, economic development, et cetera, if we do in fact consider it?
So just before we open it up for general discussion, the background of, of course, this has, was some inquiries primarily by the Chuchu and Mollys. And the real thrust, in terms of the village side of things, there's not a substantial financial gain in terms of the village with these kind of gaming situations, but for the businesses, it can be substantial. Mr. Zimmer did a kind of a survey of some of the surrounding communities and some of the various restaurants, and actually, here's Mr. Molly's himself. And it looks like with five games, you know, that's the maximum you can have in one establishment, these restaurants were making about between $8,000 to $10,000 a month in additional revenue. So if you have a situation where you have a new restaurant looking at Riverside or Berwyn, by going across the street to Harlem, they could put another $100,000 a year in their pocket, basically. So the real thrust of this is to try to bring, give our existing businesses and prospective businesses competitive equality with surrounding communities. That's really the thrust of the proposal. So now I'll open it up for discussion by the trustees.
Wait, 5% comes to the village?
Right. And, you know, with five machines, if you just had five machines, and Ms. Francis provided some figures, you're probably looking at about $1,500 a month, something like that, to the village. So, you know, if Mollys and Chuchu, let's say that they both put them in, you know, we're probably looking at around $10,000, $10,000 to $15,000 a year for the village, which, you know, to put that in context, that's, you know, that's three seasonals. But, you know, I just would like, I guess, my point is, it's good for the village, but the real, the real purpose of it is to, is our continuing effort to try to enhance the business environment for our businesses. Further comments or questions or thoughts?
I'd be more inclined to stop video gaming everywhere. Sorry to be the bad news bear, but I won't patronize an establishment that has it.
Mr. Pollak?
And I love your cheeseburgers, so I'm really sorry about that.
To go.
Yeah.
Yeah, to go. There you go.
I gave this a lot of thought over the last week or longer, and, you know, my initial reaction was much like Trustee Hamilton's. And, you know, that was kind of on a personal level. I don't find those places attractive. In fact, I find them very unattractive and not the kind of places I want to go to. And there are some fine establishments that have video gaming, but the atmosphere is different. But then I thought, you know, as you said, there is a benefit to the community, a slight benefit to the community, and a significant financial benefit to the business, and so I struggled as a matter of public policy, what is my concern with it? What is the issue? The best way I can describe my objection to it is I think it cheapens the brand. I think having video gaming in a community in a historic downtown cheapens the brand. It creates a different atmosphere, and I think that we need to keep our standards higher, and I think we need to continue to prohibit video gaming.
So there's two nays. Does anybody else think?
You know, in many ways, I don't disagree with anything you said, and generally, when you walk into an establishment, you see, you know, somebody sitting in the corner just slugging in quarters, pulling a thing. I understand that. But, you know, our businesses that we have here, you know, I, Brian was nice enough to show me around where he was planning, but it's in a room that you won't even, you wouldn't even know is going on, very similar to what, I mean, I bet you people go into Chef Shangri-La and have no idea they have a video gaming room in there. They have, you know, quite a good-sized one in the back, it's right around the tiki bar, and nobody has any idea it's there because it's in a closed room with a closed door. So, I mean, I see where you're coming from, but I think the establishments that we have understand where they're having, you know, where they are and what they're doing, and I think that they'll do, I know they'll do their best to make sure it's done discreetly and done well. But every community around us, now, I know that's a lemming thing where, you know, my dad used to say, "Well, if everyone does it, are you going to do it too?" And I know how, you know, know how bad that sounds, but, you know, when you have businesses that are renting in our community, you know, they don't, you know, they can easily move less than a mile away and reap the benefits that, from another community as close as Harlem Avenue, Ogden Avenue. community as close as Harlem Avenue, Ogden Avenue, First Avenue, right on the other side of our borders. I mean, they're, it's all around us. You know, I, I think it's extremely important for us to be, for us to be on top of this, for us to regulate this. This is extremely highly regulated in the state of Illinois. I went on the video gaming website, I can see every business in every community, in every county in the state, and how much they made last week, or last month, and year-to-date. And it's, it's, I mean, Ryan's, $135,000 to date. Oak Brook Terrace, $85,000 to date. These are towns that are, you know, not far off of our size. You know, Brookfield, $105,000 to date. Now, I'm not saying we're going to go gangbusters like a lot of other places have, but this is, this is both serious money to our, to our businesses, it's going to help attract businesses, it's going to help open some businesses, and it's going to help, what I really think is it's going to help maintain our businesses, which we really need to do.
I, I honestly don't care whether or not the Village of Riverside ever got a penny out of this, but I recognize the revenue potential for the businesses. And if indeed, they could sequester this, so that it was not visible to the dining public, then I would be willing to support it. But for instance, unless they've remodeled recently, as recently as a month ago, in Chef Shangri-La, you can be seated at tables where you're looking right at it, right at it. They've got windows there, you know. So if indeed they have a room where it's not visible to the dining public, then, then I, I would reconsider and be willing to support it. But because I recognize that it's important to the, to the businesses, I wouldn't vote for it strictly on the basis that it's going to bring us any money. I don't care about that.
Can we, can we make that a stipulation? That it's in a separate room?
Mr. Martin?
Well, I mean, they do have to be under the, the state law separated in some manner. I mean, some places do it a little more obviously than others. But we could look at wording ours a little more strongly.
Well, Joe, you mentioned, why am I asking you? You have a place where it would be not obvious to everyone?
Yeah, that was the biggest stipulation on my part. I really didn't want it.
Right.
Mike, can you come up to the-
So-
Because I just couldn't picture where you would, where you would have it, nor could I picture where Chuchu would have it, you know.
We have a separate room in the back that's storage right now, so the kitchen would obviously be shifted back, the area where the kitchen's at right now.
As long as you keep making those good cheeseburgers.
I, I mean, let me start off by saying, like, when this first came to light, was it three years ago, four years ago, when they were talking about gambling in Illinois? I, I was against it. I didn't want it. It was going to ruin our brand. I don't want it, I didn't want any part of it. But when I started frequenting, you know, some of the, you know, places that I'm friends with and I go to, like Ryan's and, and Brookfield, she's got a separate room out to the back, and it's, you know, barely visible, you know, unless we pull down the hallway there. But I, she's got cameras on it as well, and, and, you know, it's the safest room possible. And what I was looking at as far as private parties, you know, things generating revenue for that, I'm not looking at as far as like a gambling revenue, where people are going to come and, you know, lose their, their house on the whole thing. You know, that's the, you know, that's, I, I run an establishment where there's, there's alcohol being served too, and we have to be trained, you know, as far as that's concerned. So, you know, we get people coming in that, you know, we refuse service to many a times, you know, yesterday as a matter of fact, just because they've had too much alcohol. And, you know, that's, you know, the same would be, I don't know how the state's regulating it, but, you know, the people we talked to do regulate it pretty strong as far as looking all these things in the past. And I think there should be some, you know, public outcry as far as, like, you know, people coming in and saying, you know, what's the pros and cons of everything? You know, what everybody's views on it, you know. So I'm for it, everybody's for it. I really am. And if, if everybody's against it, then, you know, that's, that's the way it is too. I, I think it'd be good for the town as far as revenue's concerned, absolutely. You know, and as far as private, you know, I, I stress the whole thing as far as being, you know, private, I don't want it in my front room at all. I don't want to be invisible to-
Well, as I said, you know, if, if the Village of Riverside makes revenue out of this, to me, that's cream on top, you know. But I'm more interested in keeping you competitive and keeping you happy being in Riverside, because we're so happy having you in Riverside. But I mean, that's, to me, that's the strongest point about this. And as long as it could be worked out so that it was not obvious to the diners, then, then I would withdraw my objection.
Well, let's, let's take a hypothetical, because that's, I really, that's a good point. I know, in speaking with Mr. Zimmer, where, where he had in mind was in the upstairs area, you know, kind of in the back, that back kind of corner. So I see in here that, that, that the, the location has to be restricted to 21 years or older. So if he was to put something like that in that upper tier, does that mean that only people over 21 could go, could eat upstairs?
That's a lot, actually, that did.
But I mean, how far does it, does it extend?
Right, and so, I mean, that's a, that's a question we'd have to look at, because I think sometimes they just mean maybe the separation, the area where the machines are, so that people can still be dining in that front part of the upstairs, but that back corner would be separate.
Usually there's a blue line, there's just a blue line right two, three feet away from the chairs.
Right.
Well, I would hope that if that's the place that Scott had, he would be doing some remodeling or something to, I don't want to dine upstairs next to that, you know.
Right. I don't, but that, I guess that's the, you know, as a, when you say have it closed off completely, you know, I, I don't know whether something like that would be feasible upstairs for him. But, you know, I think that's where he has in mind is in that back corner back there. So, but it would not be a-
Couldn't he close off the back corner with a door on it? A doorway on it?
I, I don't know.
But it also has to be a view of at least one employee, so I don't think you could just-
You can have a camera.
You can have a camera.
You can have cameras on it.
Yeah.
So.
That's my, that's what my yes vote depends on.
I, I appreciate those, those comments, and, and I, I would agree that at the very least it should be separated, physically separated, not visible from, from the, from the dining area or the, or the bar. I mean, I still am not supportive of that, but I would also suggest that if, if a majority of the trustees want to do this, that you also prohibit any outside signage identifying it, identifying that the establishment has video gaming.
Other comments? Mr. Lumsen, anything?
I'm inclined to support it. We've been working pretty hard to find ways to generate revenue and to help our businesses, and this one checks both of those boxes. I personally don't gamble with those. I mean, every day I go to work, I gamble. So, especially in the construction industry these days. But again, I think we need to provide to our villagers that same opportunity, so that they don't go 10 blocks away to somewhere else to have that entertainment capacity. So I, it checks my box for what we're trying to, our overall mission is, is to create some revenue and to, to support our businesses. So I'm inclined to support this at this time. But I do think that, that we need to be very careful, so that we don't impact our brand. And, and I think there's, there's quite a few locations where they have the video gaming and they do it quite discreetly, and it works out well. Your plan, I think, is in that same vein, and I think Scott would do a, a fine job of it. They don't want to ruin the, the environment of their restaurants, your brand as a, as the pub. So I think the institutions that we have help, help our decision, at least it helps my decision.
Mr. Stan?
No, I'm willing to support it. I do share Trustee Powell's concerns on our brand, but I think our reach should be limited to the exterior. I, I think it's very hard for us to legislate what they can and can't do on the interior. I think the free market and the business owners can dictate that, and I think that should speak loud enough.
I think we just don't want the blinking signs.
No, I would, I would, I would suggest there not be any, I don't want blinking signs or hanging banners or anything like that. As long as it's not advertised externally, I'd certainly be in favor and let the business owner decide how to handle it internally.
I mean, that's pretty much where I come down as well. I, I mean, I would, I don't, I, I wouldn't put that kind of stipulation that they have to actually wall off an area. And again, to Mr. Lumsen's point, I, the people that we're talking about here, you know, they have long-established records of being good neighbors in this town. So I don't think we have to worry about them not doing it correctly.
And if we don't have to worry about it, let's have that stipulation.
Because, because-
There's no harm to having it.
There's no harm in having it, yeah.
Well, except, you know-
I don't know if it needs a door, because I think you're running into exiting problems.
Well, he doesn't need a door, they could put up a short wall, you know, six-foot wall. That would be enough. Like a partition, like you'd have in an office.
Hey, you can get a swinging door.
Yeah, yeah.
Take a look, Martha. I mean, I, I guess I just, I would, I think that falls more into the, I think that's more up to the business owner.
That's taste.
I think, I think, you know, that, I, I wouldn't be willing to put that kind of burden on our, our business owners if they want to do it. If that, if that means you don't, if they have cheeseburgers, I'm sorry.
It does. And it also means I have to stop going to the Chuchu.
Well, that's your problem. Okay, so that-
Well, and, and I would be concerned with enforcement. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of judgment calls that would have to be made by staff and us. Is the wall high enough? Is it obscure enough? Is it, I just think the business, the patrons will tell the owners what they need to do.
So let's, let's kind of just walk down this list here, so it's, there does seem to be a majority in favor of opting in. What about, should we allow it only in existing businesses, or would we be open to, like, if a new restaurant comes into town that wants to do it, would we extend, I assume, extend the same?
Ah, hell, let them all do it then.
But then, see, this is, this is where I think it's important, to Ellen's point, because granted, we, we, we have a track record with Brian, and we have a track record with Scott, and we know whatever that those two gentlemen will do in their businesses will be done tastefully and will be done discreetly, and to the betterment of Riverside. We don't have a track record with someone coming into town. And, and what we're trying to do is, is use this as another tool in our box to, to actually bring people into town. So if we don't have a track record with somebody, it would be surely, I think, well-intentioned for us to make sure that they know exactly what we're, what we're expecting of them, and that would be, I think we can craft something where it's, leaves, you know, the, the discretion to our staff and, and takes the design element out that, you know, they cannot be visible, cannot, sound cannot travel, kids cannot, you know, just, it just cannot be, cannot be visible from the dining, dining or dining public in any fashion. So I mean, I think we can, I think we can do that. I think we can, we can get there. Because there's got to be a lot of people like Ellen that, that think like this. You know, she's not, she's not the only one in town, and I think if, if she says, "I'm not going to walk into Chuchu anymore, I'm not going to walk in and get the cheeseburger anymore."
Well, I'll walk into his place, because he's putting it in the back room.
Right, okay. But if, if we have someone that's, that says that, there are other people that will also say that. So I think it's important that we, 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 we take their thoughts into consideration too with this, because this is a big step for us.
So, yes, Mr. Powell?
Question for the village attorney, what, what is our discretion in, in limiting this to two existing businesses or three? Is it like a special use in zoning, or do we have a broader discretion?
Well, it's, it's tied to the liquor licenses, so we would have to try to craft something so that when a new business came to you for a liquor license, they would be looking for a particular type of liquor license that gaming came along with it. And through our liquor licensing powers, we could impose these sort of restrictions.
But what is our discretion to say no?
Well, you know, if, if they're meeting the criteria that you've laid out in your licensing category, we'd probably have a tough time saying no, because it's largely regulated by the state. We're opting in, and we can be creative with ways to try to limit or control it, but we don't necessarily get to just pick and choose.
So, I mean, we keep talking about this in the context of the Chuchu and Molly's, which are great businesses with great operators, but given that, we have to think broader. I mean, this is going to, if we allow it for them, we have to allow it for everyone, any new business coming into town. So we have to think about the-
I mean, I, I, I have seen people get increasingly creative with the liquor licenses and caps on numbers and those sorts of things, so, but, you know, we can see how far we can push it, certainly.
And that kind of gets to the next question. What, what is the diff, what is a gambler, what's meant by gambling parlor?
Like a daddies?
Yes, I was going to try not to use the name.
But aren't they under, aren't they under the same, same regulations as the Chuchu or Molly would be? Are they considered to be the same?
Well, in looking at your licensing categories, your licenses are largely tied to restaurant service, okay? And what we found is these type of establishments don't generally have kitchens, they're bringing in pre-prepared foods. They don't necessarily, the, the way your licenses are largely set up, it's preparation of full meals, and your restaurant definition would gen, would exclude these type of businesses. So I think you're in pretty good shape there, unless you wanted to create a specific license, which we've done other places for these type of establishments.
So we, we would already, our current ordinances would prohibit a gambling parlor, because they don't serve food.
Yes, yes.
They tavern with gambling, basically.
Right. I mean, those places serve food, but not in the way that your liquor license wants you to in order to get a liquor license.
So the next question would be different licensing requirements for the B1 and B2, but I, again, the consensus is not to go the route of the ambulance parlor, so I assume we would just have the same restrictions for B1 and B2. Is that right? Yes. And what about the designation of the, of any, any revenue that was derived for a specific purpose, or would you just rather have it go into the general fund and be treated as just another revenue source? Shaking your head, yes, is have it go into the general fund?
That's what we need to hear.
I, I think for now, yeah.
So, do you want to see if you can take a stab at this? I mean, I still have, I still have concerns about this, about putting a restriction on it, saying that it can't be visible from the dining area, because when I imagine the upstairs, Chuchu, I don't see how it would be possible unless you walled off the back corner, which is an added expense then to the, to the restaurant. So, but do you want to see if there are some other communities that have language like that out there?
Yes.
You can take a look at it, but it seems like that we, there is consensus to opt in with appropriate, appropriate regulations to protect.
Along with the prohibition of advertising for it. We can work that into-
Right.
Yeah, I've gotten up since the various points made.
Okay. All right. Any other new business for this evening? We do have a need for an executive, thank you, Mr. Carroll. We do have a need for an executive session tonight for the discussion of pending litigation, discussion of probable or imminent litigation, consideration of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene of final action taken. Motion by Mr. Lumsen, second by Mr. Ballereen. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballereen.
Aye.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsen.
Aye.
Trustee Powell.
I'll take it.
Trustee Powell.
Trustee Powell.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Seth.
Aye.
Trustee Ham.
Aye.